Yes, good morning. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, June 28, 2022 in Coachella. And just some introductory remarks, I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting has been connected as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBW's Coachella office and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda. Meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on an item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. We'll have all the directors here, so we don't need to worry about all this other stuff. And let's see, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Here.
Okay, so we're gonna, at this time of the board, recess or adjourn to closed session. Is it adjourn or recess?
Recession.
Recession, we're not adjourning. Recession to closed session, we have two items on the closed session agenda. We will reconvene to open session no earlier than 9:00 AM. So we're gonna shoot for 9 o'clock, might be a little bit later. And we'll report out on closed session and then take up the remainder of our agenda at that time. See through the window. Well, still morning, huh? Apologize for how long it's been, but we completed our closed session, so the regular open session is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from the closed session. And so we're gonna continue on with our business. We have, I'm not aware of any additions, deletions to the agenda.
Correct, sir. Nothing, nothing to be added.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to make public comment at this time?
For those on Zoom, we have a few individuals. If you would like to make general public comment, please use the raise hand feature at this time, and I will call on you. At this time, Mr. President, I don't, there are no raise hands.
Okay, let me know if we get anything. All right, so the consent calendar consists of items 7A through M.
Mr. President, if I may, just for the record, on item 7K, it was not noted on the action, but just, we do have a, but, well, it's partially noted, there's a budget amendment resolution 21-22-007 that will also be approved as part of that action.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's passed 5-0. Couple immaterial edits to the minutes, but I'll let you know afterwards.
Aye, sir.
Let's see, we got to 9A ordinance, 1399.16. This is the year 2023 domestic water service rates. Jeff Keel.
Good morning.
Sit down. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. We've brought back to the board, per your request, the rate options, including a zero-rate approval option. You have a PowerPoint in the presentation, and you also have the staff report. We also have our controller, Carrie Swains, on the line to answer any detailed questions if necessary. Would the board prefer to have presentation or just entertain questions?
I'd say for the benefit of the audience.
And me, since I wasn't here last, last time.
Oh, oh, do you wanna?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, go ahead then. I was gonna say, we covered a lot of this in closed session, but go ahead.
Okay, so we'll go through the pre-
Just do a high-level presentation.
Sure.
I would appreciate that.
Carrie, would, did you want to do it? I can drive the slides for you. Just Carrie in there.
Is she, hold on.
Carrie's on vacation right now, but she had put so much into this, she really wanted to see this to completion, both the rates and the budget.
She's on the-
Carrie?
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes, if you'd like to guide the discussion, I'll let you do that, and I'll-
Yes, so if you can go to the next slide, please.
Yeah. Make the appropriate changes.
Yeah. So, good morning, Board of Directors, and General Manager Barrett. So this is the presentation for the domestic water rate. So this slide right here just provides a brief snapshot of the, what we're gonna be covering. If you can please go to the next slide, please, Jeff. So this slide provides a snapshot of the presentation in the last few months of the discussion on the domestic water rate. And it shows, for the, for the purpose of this discussion, for this presentation, we are going to be changing the percentage presentation to the, to the single-family residential 20CCF, so that it's comparable. It has gone through with the BAI as to the difference between the person, the percentage that was presented the last time, and how we're gonna proceed in going forward. If you need me to go more in detail, I can go, but it's not, this is the, a slideshow, a slide of what shows the, the difference of the comparison for the rates. So if you can please go to the next slide, Jeff. So in this slide right here, as requested by the board in the last presentation, we provided a snapshot of the 10-year history. So when staff looked at the recommendation of the water reduction, we looked at the 10-year history of the rates and also the consumption. We took into consideration the trending and all the drought-related mandates in the past 10 years. So as shown in this slide, if you're comparing the water consumption from 2013 to 2016, the total water reduction was about 26.7. So we did meet the mandate of cutting our, our water consumption by about 26.7%. So in last July, Governor Newsom called for a 15%, voluntary reduction from a 2020 actual consumption. So if you're looking at this slide right here, if we did follow the voluntary reduction from fiscal 2020, the fiscal 2020 is at 36,260 CCF, we will need to come up with 30,821 to comply with the 15% mandate. So this is just a snapshot of, of the rate changes using a single-family residential 20CCF, and also the total water consumption in the past 10 years. If there's no questions on this slide, I could move on to the next one. So this slide right here, again, it's been discussed earlier, we are presenting three scenarios. Scenario one is what the staff was recommending. And scenario one is, so back in, on May 24th, sorry, apologize, May 24th, the State Water Resource Control Board did adopt an expanded drought regulation to activate Level 2 of the water shortage plan, contingency plan. So the goal of that is to expand, to reduce overall water consumption between 10 to 20% as compared to the 2020 actual consumption. The district officially adopted Level 2 plan on June 14th. So to date, there are no specific punitive implications of not meeting the 10%, the 10% to the 20% reduction by the end of fiscal 2023. So at this point, for the purpose of this rate analysis, staff is presenting the scenarios that include both the effect of a 15% reduction in water consumption and a 3.33% reduction in water. The 3.33% reduction in staff, in the, in the staff recommendation is the maximum percentage reduction that will still allow the district to achieve an operating revenue that exceeds operating expenses and debt service payments. So that is scenario one. As you can see here, that is a 5.85% increase that we're proposing with a reduction to 38.765 CCF from 2022. So that is a total water rate revenue of 2.41. Is there any specific questions on this? And I can move on to the next slide. So again, once, sorry about this one, so for this, for this particular slide, Board again asked as to what were the assumptions that were included in determining the operating expenses that was used, the projected for fiscal 2023. So the majority of the increase in the operational costs are inflation-related, and as of May 2022, the Riverside County CPI is at nine point, plus 9.4%. So the district is maintaining-
Are you still there, Carrie? We can, we can proceed. So the, here's the, I don't know, I haven't given that feedback.
That's because we have to increase volume to bring her volume in, and so now we have to adjust it.
Okay. So here are the main drivers of some of the significant changes is, you know, we have experienced, as the entire world has done, increases in prices, and chemicals has been huge. We've had up to a doubling in, in some of these areas. Chlorine is one of the more significant ones, is a huge driver in the increase, and also the cathodic protection project, which the district recently implemented, which is a very excellent project for preserving the structure over time. But of course, it's got some significant one-time costs that are built in to the budget. The rest of these significant items, increase in personnel are largely related to MOU-related issues, and then the power is significantly higher for this year. We just put here as a footnote, the CPI, as of the last reported issuance, is 9.4%. I'd just like to have that mentioned in context of, this budget's been developed over a period of months, and even though we didn't have, you know, small increases in our assumptions for CPI, it's, it's really been going up more significantly recently. So that's, that's a part of what we'll be challenged with as we move through this budget year. Capital expenditures are up significantly, and as was mentioned, the Pago portion of the 30, let's see, for domestic, is 34 million in total, but only, only 6.4 of that is Pago, and really only 1.75 million is actually specific domestic projects. So the rest is being funded from one-time sources, reserves, and also grants and loans. Here's the projects that are listed, and we've, these are very familiar to the board. There've been no changes since the last presentation. And here's the summary numbers. So overview of the debt outstanding for domestic, we have a couple of different instruments that we are already looking at adhering to requirements of the loans for. The first of them is the $19.8 million SRF loan, with, that has a $5 million grant forgiveness element to it, and that's for the Highway 86 project. And then we have 35.2 million in drinking water notes. This basically bridge financing for the other funding, which doesn't kick in until later on. And USDA is an application, it says it's in progress, but it's really on the verge of being approved, and so we will be expecting to receive the 22.7 million in this federal funding with 4.8 million in grant fundings, and that's for a whole series of projects, North Shore, Dale Kyler, and three booster stations. So when you look at the, the debt service coverage options of our three budget scenarios, and this is more of a discussion for the public's benefit, as we covered this in closed session, we, we are presenting three scenarios, and the staff recommended scenario does include a rate increase that averages 5.85%. And it's assuming a 3.33% decrease in water consumption, which as Carrie already mentioned, gets us down to the lowest reduction in water consumption that's absorbable under this model, and still meeting that debt service coverage ratio. Board had asked us to also bring back this scenario, what if we, we do the zero-rate increase, and that's scenario three? So if we go with either scenario two or scenario three, the theme of the year will be monitor, 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 and provide continual reporting back to the board. Because what we'll be looking at is having to meet these previously discussed debt instrument covenants by closing of the books on fiscal 23. And we do have some levers we can pull, such as increasing debt repayment to the domestic fund on the Mid Valley Pipeline, and that would meet those debt covenants as we see it.
Jeff, if I, if I could just add to that. So this slide 10 that we're looking at does not show all the revenue. We're also receiving a 5.54 million in inter-fund loan repayment.
Yes.
And when that's included in the revenues, it changes the net revenue to 1.685 positive number.
Yes.
Million. And given the debt service of 838,000, the ratio becomes a little bit over 2, it's 2.009.
Yes.
So just to be clear, I know that's not on the slide, but-
Yes.
That makes scenario three, when you count that revenue from the inter-fund debt viable in terms of meeting the, the covenants.
Correct. And I'll just also point out there, down there, when we talk about the USDA loan, we're not actually expecting to have debt service on that until maybe as late as fiscal 25. So that's, helps us now, but it increases the pressure in the future years, once that kicks in. Okay, here's the domestic fund summary under the three scenarios. This first slide, oops, I didn't move forward.
Carrie's back on the line.
Oh, Carrie.
I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
I don't know what happened, I got cut off. All of a sudden, I lost my Zoom. Um, so, yeah, I apologize. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, we're on slide 11, if you want to pick it up, that's fine.
Yes, so, yeah, this is just a snapshot of the three scenarios, again, as Jeff has covered. So based on the three scenarios, we are at a net operating loss in scenario two and three. That's just for the operating portion of it. And if you go to the next slide, so this is the full picture of how the fund is going to be balanced out at the end of the, based on the budget. So this one shows the non-operating revenues and expenses. So again, as Director, President Powell has mentioned, that inter-fund revenue is coming in as a revenue of 5.5 million dollars, as planned for fiscal 2023. And so the net capital expenditure actually in Pago is 6.4 million. So out of the 34.1 million capital improvement projects, including multiple capital projects, it is majorially funded by restricted funds from the developer fees, 1,020. Capital grant revenue is about 15 million, and then the, the loan that's coming from the domestic note that we sold for the North Shore, their Kyler, for 11.8 million dollars. So the net Pago for capital expenditure is 6.4 million. So less the debt service payments of 838, so you have a non-operating loss of 1.7 all across all three scenarios. So the net of that is, is actually, we are utilizing, we're gonna be utilizing reserves if scenario two and scenario three is selected for the, for the zero-rate increase. So we are decreasing our unassigned reserve effectively for both scenarios.
Right, yeah, thanks, Carrie. And just to, to make it, to put a point on that, we would still have unassigned reserves under scenario three at the end of the year of over 11 and a half million dollars.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Which, yeah, which, okay.
So one of the things that I did hear briefly from Jeff earlier is, again, for the USDA, we do not have the terms yet, so we are still to find out what the future terms would be on implications of those. So that, I just kinda wanted to kinda reiterate that on the USDA. We'll, we'll find out hopefully soon on what the terms will be.
And to that point, and really keying off of previous discussions, we may or may not want to proceed with that. So with each one of these debt service obligations we take on, there are future obligations that we're agreeing to. So if, we'll be bringing that back to the board, and if the board isn't comfortable with that, then we can look at other financing options.
Good, okay. Thank you, Jeff. Does that cover it for the staff presentation? Thank you. So I've been informed that if, if we do scenario three, we do not have to adopt an ordinance because it's not a rate increase.
That's correct.
So if we do that for Jeff Faray, do we need to take formal action in order to do
Since there, since there is an item on the agenda to take one of those three actions, I would request or recommend a vote to, to state that you were going with, with the third scenario, just so there's a record that there was action taken and what it was.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we, oh my gosh, I'll make a motion that we adopt the scenario three model, which includes no rate increase.
Correct.
And does not require an ordinance.
Correct.
I'll second that.
So since I was missing from last time, I'll make a couple comments from last month. I, I heard it was quite, quite a lively discussion.
Director, thank you.
I don't know what happened, so I keep turning it on, it goes off.
Because when I turn mine on, yours goes off.
Okay, all right. So anyway, I, I have been turning it on. So first of all, the 2020 comparison, I mean, that, I'm sure it was mentioned, but, you know, that, that's during the COVID era, you have a lot of tourist and resort-based economy that aren't here. That's, that's a pretty tough call to, for the governor to expect us to, to meet those numbers. But, you know, I see that we're, you know, we're trying to do our level in conservation, and we'll, we'll continue to do that, but it's kind of an anomaly in the data when you look at that, so I just wanted to make that comment. And, you know, we have this ability to meet our budgetary and, and reserve policies with this inter-fund loan payment, it makes a whole lot of sense. But I just want to say that, I, I mean, I, I recognize, and I think the board is recognizes as well, the, the real need to meet the bond and loan covenants, and we're gonna make every effort to do that, then meet those covenants. You know, those actions in the future will, will be rate increases and fee adjustments and good financial management, and it seems like that's what we're doing today with, with the budget and the fees. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the no-fee increase scenario three.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm in agreement with the recommendation of the note rate increases, but I, I wanted to just make sure that, as it relates to the operating capital improvement budget, which I know we're gonna take action on, on a separate item, that as it relates to that schedule, none of that changes.
So we designed the operating and capital improvement budget item to parallel this item so that no matter which of the three choices you approved as far as the rates, there's a parallel item in the operating budget scenario number three that meets all of our obligations.
My, so my question is, under the scenario where you, where we have the recommendation of rate increases.
Yes.
We have so many projects associated with that budget, with those rate increases. We're not losing any projects on scenario three where we have no rate increases.
Correct. We don't have a scaled-down capital improvement program under-
They're all the same.
They're all the same.
Thank you.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure about that, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, I want-
In his presentation, he's got one for that.
Didn't use to do that. You know, just a, just a, one, one other comment I wanted to make is that, you know, we've put a lot of effort into this, and I know your department, Jeff, has been very responsive, so I do appreciate that, thank you. But when I look at it, you know, we have, I would say, robust reserves through a variety of different funds, including the domestic fund. We're able to meet our covenants as we understand them without a rate increase, and even with no rate increase, we're gonna end this fiscal year, according to our budget, with unassigned reserves, meaning we're meeting all the reserves that we think we need, plus we have some additional that are gonna be there at the end of the year. So, you know, it, it's foreseeable that in future years, we are going to need to raise rates, and when the time comes that, that we need to do that in order to meet our revenue requirements of these funds, then we'll do it. I mean, I, I'll commit to that. I just don't see that as a necessity right now, so that's why I'm in favor of no rate We ready to vote? Right, then, good, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed 5-0. Action. I'm gonna recuse on the second one, just FYI, because I own some property near there.
Okay.
So you know that item well, obviously, but, all right. 10A, Robert, this is our participation in the 500-plus plan.
Yes, sir, President Powell. Okay, yep, thanks, Sophia. Good morning, members of board. After months of, you know, pre-intest work and, you know, conversations with, and guidance, you know, from the board and the community, you know, pleased to bring to you the, this conservation program for the Colorado River for your consideration. So the requests consist of these following actions, I'm not gonna read them all, but- So the requests consist of these following actions, I'm not going to read them all, but, you know, it provides a legal framework and also the resolution to start the, you know, for us to start this process by which we can engage our community and see if there's any possibilities for maybe conserving and, you know, helping to preserve the, the health of the Colorado River. And also, we also, one of the final actions is to make a determination that the, you know, these actions are exempt from CEQA. So I think, I don't need to go through a lot of this background, I think everybody knows how dire the situation and the outlook on the Colorado River is. And so the program that we're, is going to be funded through the 500,000-plus plan, which is about $200 million in '22 and '23, which is designed to conserve up to a million acre feet of Colorado River water for use in the system. You know, by the way of background, I think we had a, a nice turnout at the May 17 workshop that we got a lot of input on. And then we've had some, you know, pretty good discussions with potential participants that we got feedback from. And we also, you know, got, I wouldn't say great survey turnout, but I think we probably get about a dozen or 15 survey responses. And so, you know, what you see, you know, before you for consideration for approval is part of, has been the culmination of those efforts. So one of the things that we're asking the board to look at is the adoption of the program agreements. So there's actually two separate agreements that we're looking at. I think one, on the left-hand side, is the Metropolitan CVWD agreement. And it provides the outline for, you know, the, you know, the verification, the payments, and also the forbearance of the program. There's other things in there that, you know, we will have Metropolitan's involvement in this, because I think they are, because this program is a little bit different, I think, from the other two, that they're, you know, they're currently having their torches. I think, you know, the other two are Palaverdi Irrigation District and also Bard Program. And we're different in the sense that we actually do meter our consumption. The other major, you know, package that we're asking you to approve today is the program agreement, which contains rules and regulations, and then the grower applications and so on, and also the consent forms. So let me just walk you through the program elements so that, you know, you, you'll know what you're signing off on. So again, I think, you know, I just want to make it very clear that none of these funds that are going to be distributed to our growers are going to have a negative impact on our canal rates. This will be funded by external parties, the, so once you go through the process, the applicant specifies the method of conservation. And so, you know, we're allowing not just land fouling, but also crop substitution, where, you know, they can actually use a crop that potentially uses, you know, lower, lower water. But, you know, all this is going to be metered. I think an important component of this, we want to also make sure that there's no negative impacts to our groundwater, our groundwater levels. $200 an acre foot net to the grower, and it's going to be paid in two installments. The irrigation water availability assessment will be fully or partially waived during participation period and do analysis on this. We don't think there's going to be any negative impacts to our revenues, you know, from such action. And then the landowner and LEC is going to be responsible for just, you know, paying their normal payments, and then also providing, you know, dust and weed control.
How do you, how does the landowner do that?
How do they provide for the dust control?
Weed control.
I think it's really up to them. I mean, we'll, we'll have a discussion with them, you know, when they go through the application. I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert on, on that. You know, I think we're looking to them to see how, you know, what ideas they have for doing that.
So, I mean, so you're going to require that they provide dust and weed control for the acreage that are conserved?
Right.
That's, 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 that's very unrealistic.
Well, the point is so that the program doesn't create an environmental nuisance, right?
Well, I, I...
Because you wouldn't be able to adopt the program if it did.
I, I understand, but...
The contract requires them to perform any required weed and dust control that external authorities may require. It's, the district is not establishing its own requirements. It's simply, if you are required to do this by some other entity, you will do it, and that is...
I, I get it, why, it's a good thing, but, I mean, realistically, I don't think you're going to get anybody to sign up for this program at all, especially under that, that right there is a red flag. So, I mean, I, I'm just being honest with you. I mean, if, if you're on the hook for that, that's, and I understand why you have it in there, it's, that's good to have it in there, but if you, if we want to still adopt this to, just to learn, then maybe that's what you're, we want to do.
Sir, I can appreciate the fact that, under the current offer, there may not be sufficient offsetting revenue to provide for those additional costs. And, and that may change as we move forward. What we're trying to do, at least now, is to try and get approval for a program. If the net payment to the participants is able to increase because of additional funds provided by others, at least we have a program in place to take advantage of that. Right now, we don't have anything.
I know, but I, I just think that, that right there, you're going to have to define that a little bit more. I mean, that's kind of the fine print, that...
So...
I don't know if this is already a program that's in, in place in, in other places?
It is.
It is.
Okay, so, so Palaverdi and Met is already doing this?
It's, it's in all of the agreements for the other fouling programs, absolutely. It's just, it, it may be a little bit more rural where, where they are than where we are.
Yeah, you know, honestly, we fall under, the Coachella Valley falls under the AQMD Rule 4.3.1, which is a dust control rule that's already in place. That, that's not going to change. And...
In fact, that's kind of the requirement.
It, it is the requirement, yeah. Yeah, we're all required to have plans consistent with that, and so that would just continue. I'm not personally aware of any weed control regulations that are applicable. But if there, if there were one, then this, then it would be, you'd be required to follow it.
Okay.
You know, I think that's more of a nuisance if your neighbors are...
I know, but if it, if it's, if it's in there, that means that someone could tell you that it needs to be changed. I'm just pointing, pointing that out.
Okay, what else? No, certainly appreciate the comment, but I, I don't know if I remember hearing, you know, a lot of issues, you know, with this particular one. I think it's more the General Manager Barrett's issue that, you know, maybe the, you know, the funding isn't sufficient. But again, you know, we're not in control of that. I mean, it's, you know, it's, the funding is actually set by the going rate right now. Okay, so, if I may, so for the participation steps, you know, kind of marching from left to right, you know, assuming that this program gets, you know, gets authorized, you know, by the board. So we'll open up the, the program, you know, for participation. So the participant, you know, completes the application, it's going to be available online. You know, the staff, what we'll do is, in conjunction with consultation with Metropolitan staff, you know, we'll review the application and determine, you know, the baseline historical usage, and also then, you know, validate or, you know, bring in the, the program into the fold. I will say that the baseline discussion, you know, has consumed a little bit more time than I, you know, thought. I think originally that, you know, we, you know, the concept that was on the table was using five years' worth of historical data, and then, you know, you've got to demonstrate at least three out of the five years of usage. I think this is pretty consistent with, you know, other programs that we've seen. And the concept that we were going to be using was taking, dropping off the, you know, high and low years, and then using, if, for example, if they have five years' worth of usage, just using the, you know, the mineral three. You know, I think, in looking at a few of the examples from the surveys that we, you know, received, you know, that, that concept may or may not work. So, you know, we came up with a different proposal that, you know, we discussed with Metropolitan, it's taken a little bit of time to, you know, for, for dialogue. I just got an answer from, from them yesterday that, so, you know, the, I think the concept that, one of the concepts is perhaps just using the very last year of historical, you know, of usage. It, you know, it, it was a little bit of education process, I will say, you know, I think with Metropolitan on this, but I think by showing them some data, anonymous data, I think they've come around and said, yeah, I think, you know, they, they will use that, you know, in cases where it can demonstrate, you know, where that's, by using that is not, you know, hurting the grower to be enrolled in the program.
So, so what are you trying to say, that you've tucked them into doing a last year?
They...
The scenario that we're going to use is the...
We can, yes. But I think, you know, again, we're going to be looking to five years' worth of data, and, you know, if it makes sense, then yes, I think that's available to us, you know, for use. Right, because, you know, we've seen one case where if we use, you know, the proposed methodology, which was three years, you know, sort of like, you know, the middle, it has unintended consequence of perhaps forcing, you know, the grower to conserve more than if you just used the last years. So, so I think we reached an agreement in principle. Again, I just got the notification from them yesterday, so, you know, I, I've spoken about this with our special counsel, and I think after, you know, this meeting, assuming that the, the proposal gets approved, then he'll work together with the Metropolitan attorney, craft some language, and then, you know, we'll bring it back to, you know, the board for adoption at a later date.
Does, does Met know that you may not get one person signed up?
I don't know. I mean, we talked to them about it.
We, we informed them that, you know, the reality is...
Director Bianco, your mic, please.
That, I mean, the reality is, is that you may not get one person.
Okay, well, that's, I, I don't know what the turnout is going to be.
You may get 10, too.
Yeah, but...
We don't know what we're going to get.
No, I understand, but it's, it's not going to be what they're looking for, right? I mean...
So in a very similar program in the Yuma area, there were 2,500 acres of permanent crops removed under a program very similar to this. So I, I don't, I can't guarantee, Robert can't guarantee, you can't guarantee, but it's a, it's a program that the district's putting up that, in another area, in this very year, that they stood up 2,500 acres.
I understand, but, but we have the, the, kind of the pulse of, of what's going on in our community, right? This is a very small valley, and...
Well, you might not get any.
Yeah, and, and to the point, to your point, as I understand it, we are, we as directors are not eligible to participate in this program. Correct? Correct, so...
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd be very surprised, I'd be very surprised, Robert, and, you know, Anthony might be right, but I mean, I was at the workshop, there were a lot of people there, and there were, seemed significant interest expressed, and then you do have these follow-up applications. So, I mean, I mean, that, that may be the case, but I think we should at least give it a chance and see what kind of response we get.
Right, and again, you know, I, I think this is something that, you know, staff has poured, poured a lot of time into it, you know, to, to make it work. Whether, you know, it's successful or not, you know, I can't control the outcome. I mean, I think all we can do is make it, and, you know, again, that's why I think Metropolitan kind of deems this as a pilot program. You know, there's no contractual obligations. I mean, other, I mean, obviously, yeah, there, there's contracts, but there's not contract for amounts that they're looking for. So I think, you know, even, okay, if we don't get somebody, you know, if we get zero participation, then I think it's a pretty good indication, okay, there's something about this, you know, maybe it's the dust control, maybe it's not, you know, it's, it's sufficient funding. But I think it would be, you know, we could follow up and say, okay, well, I mean, if, you know, if you were considering it, if you're at the workshop, but you're not taking it on, you know, I'd like to find out, you know, was there a, a chance, and, you know, what could have moved the needle for you? Right? I mean, I think sometimes, you know, by not being successful, I think you learn as much, potentially. But, you know, I'm optimistic, maybe we'll get one or two.
So, Robert, I was at the workshop also, and I know that there was a, a gentleman, at least in the audience, that was a Spanish speaker, I think he might have been more on the mid-size, small-size farm type. And I believe that, I recall that there was a threshold that, that we were setting in order to participate for the program, and I think it was a certain amount of volume of water that you needed to show as being able to conserve.
Right, right.
Did that needle get moved? Is it, is, is, can you remind me what that, what that point was?
Right, right. I think in, in, you know, discussing this with, you know, some of the other programs, Metropolitan's programs, I think one of the things that they did tell us, okay, you know, for them, threshold work, because, you know, I think the administrative time to, you know, take care of a lot of small ones, you know, is pretty burdensome. I think originally, I think we talked about, I'm trying to remember now, I think it's like, at least, you know, 100 acre feet or something like that of water conserved. I don't think we baked anything, you know, into agreement here, I think we're trying to be flexible. Again, I think, you know, to Director Bianco's point, okay, and, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, you know, within our control, to make this as flexible a program as we can. The only thing that we can't be flexible on is save the payment, because that's set by somebody else. But, you know, so I think that's the point of, you know, this process. It's going to be iterative. I think, you know, we're going to be, you know, very interactive, you know, with the, you know, with the participants, and also with, and also, you know, very iterative in the process and say, okay. You know, right now, I don't think we, you know, set any kind of caps, but, you know, I would say if you're coming in with, you know, like 10 acre feet of savings, I think we have, you know, I think through this actions, I think we've written, you know, the, the rules in such a way that it gives us, you know, ability to say...
So, so it's not as prescriptive as, as it was kind of presented?
It, no, it wasn't.
Okay, so you're going to leave it open, and if it, you're going to try to work it on a case-by-case, see if it makes sense?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry for the long answer.
You know, the, the only thing, I, I don't know that it's in your presentation today, but it seems, and we talk about CVW verifying the savings, which makes sense. But have you, are you planning to have some sort of a affidavit signed by the water user that they've actually saved this water? And, and the reason I ask is that for some operations, it would be easy to stop farming one ranch and, and start farming another, so that their overall water use doesn't change, and yet, you know, they, they may enroll one ranch in here, and it looks like they're saving water.
Right, so we did discuss that concept with the, with our legal counsel, and I think, and I'm not going to put words in, you know, Steve's mouth, but so, you know, if you want to come up here and actually speak for yourself, but, you know, as he's kind of speak, you know, coming up, we think that we've kind of crafted the, you know, the agreement language to be sufficiently protective.
Yeah, we put in the agreement, they may have a covenant, they're not going to increase the consumptive use elsewhere, above what it would have been absent this program. And the district's remedy in that situation, if we discover they're doing that, we can terminate the contract.
Yeah, I guess having them sign something like that at the begin, at the beginning is, is good. I just wonder, I mean, in the world of farming, things change all the time. I wonder if having them sign off on that same promise at the end, or, you know, there's going to be those two points where they get paid, one in the middle, one at the end.
And, you know, part of the verification process will be looking at...
Yeah.
Their other lands.
But, but having that representation made at that point might be useful. I don't know. I mean, it just, you know, things change quickly, at least in...
Yeah, and Metropolitan will be providing us with, you know, technical assistance in both evaluating the applications and doing the verification. They're going to go into the field with the Coachella personnel. They've got the experience of administering other programs, and if something is fishy, they will let us know.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, and then, I think we covered a lot of this already, but, you know, once, you know, the agreements get signed, you know, we, then we kind of move into, you know, the, you know, the actual program itself, and then, you know, I think, you know, there's various verification steps. I think, you know, one of the things that we're, we're thinking about is maybe locking out the field if it's feasible. I know, you know, within CVWD's service area, you know, there's, you know, there's cases certainly where that might not be feasible, you know, where one meter serves multiple fields, for, for instance, and I think we recognize and acknowledge that. So, you know, again, we're, we're going to be as flexible as we can in accommodating needs, you know, of these individual cases. And we are going to be conducting verifications periodically, and, you know, sometimes in conjunction with the Metropolitan personnel. And then, I think, you know, one of the important pieces of this is to audit, you know, the participant's progress by looking at their, you know, actual, you know, meters use, you know, against, you know, some, their baseline. Uh, you know, so the baseline, you know, to establish a baseline, which, you know, will be, uh, included in their agreement is gonna be an important part, you know, of the process. Because we don't wanna have, you know, have any kind of disputes, uh, when we get, you know, to the payment, you know, process. Uh, and then, you know, the reimbursements, we already talked about, you know, twice a year, uh, you know, we'll make field visits, uh, and I think, you know, sometimes in conjunction with, uh, Metropolitan. And then, uh, CVWD will pay the grower and then we'll seek reimbursement from Metropolitan. Uh, so all this process, you know, Met's gonna be with us, uh, pretty much every step of the way.
Okay.
So, uh, I think with that, uh, what the next steps are, uh, the participant, um, you know, if, if this gets approved, will complete the application, uh, in land owner consent form, and you can return it, they can return it online or, uh, through email, and then, you know, we'll review the application and then determine eligibility. And then, um, you know, if everything rolls forward, uh, we'll, uh, work on an agreement. Now, I, I think one of the things that, you know, I didn't put in here was, uh, you know, the approval of the baseline, you know, that's alternate baseline concept. Uh, and I think, uh, you know, assuming that our legal counsel is able to, you know, uh, get something, you know, crafted, um, we'll bring it to you for, uh, approval next, uh, at the next board meeting. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, you know, I, we didn't want to allow the time to, you know, to, to go by, uh, that we can, you know, if this gets approved, we can actually open it up, you know, as soon as the approval goes through. And then, you know, start working, uh, with the, uh, you know, with the growers. So, again, uh, here's the requested actions, um, and be happy to, to answer any questions that, uh, any additional question that y'all might have.
Robert, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in, I don't have it in front of me, but I noticed in the agreement with Met that there's a cap on the amount of water to be, I, I mean, I, it's unlikely that you would get there, but is that a budgetary-driven number? Or Steve, I don't know if Steve wants to comment on it, and how did that cap develop?
That comes out of the SEQA review. That, um, if the plan, program doesn't go above ten thousand acre feet per year, there are no environmental impacts.
I see.
And so that came out of the analysis that Steve Bigley's group and William Patterson did on the program.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any funding on CVWD's part?
No.
Except for.
Staff.
Or staff time?
Right, and we, we're gonna get reimbursed, you know, from, um, you know, a portion of that from Metropolitan. Well, all our staff time's gonna get reimbursed from Metropolitan.
Assuming we have participation.
Assuming we have participation, if not, then, yeah, I guess it would be sunk cost up to now, so.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, sorry.
So, that, that's the way it goes? If, if there isn't any participation, then we're, we're gonna eat all the staff's time?
Up to now.
Yeah.
Which is a lot.
Well.
Paramount.
Yes, sir.
They're only paying for the water. If there's no water saved. Okay, uh, is anybody interested in moving approval of this?
I, I will move approval of the program. Uh, it's only a ten thousand acre foot, uh, program under the SEQA guidelines, but it's, uh, it's a, uh, program that, uh, will show that, uh, the Coachella Valley Water District is a participant in the five hundred-plus plan, uh, on the river. Uh, it, uh, is an important, as we're trying to protect lake levels at Lake Powell and Lake Mead, um, at thirty-five, twenty-five and, um, ten, ten, or ten, twenty. Uh, there's, there's probably more, uh, to come in the future. And, um, for a number of months, um, you know, I've been coming back from CRB meetings and, um, uh, as my role there, uh, with the Colorado River Board of California and, uh, meeting with other states and, um, other agencies in California. And there's a lot going on in conservation, um, uh, across the West because of the drought and, which is, uh, finding the Colorado River in quite a low state of, uh, roughly a twenty-five percent, uh, um, uh, capacity of sixty million acre feet. And, you know, if we have another couple of years of, uh, this drought, it's gonna be quite the crisis. So, uh, in preparation for that and trying to mitigate, uh, some risk on the river and mitigate, uh, risk of, uh, water, uh, supply issues in Coachella, I would fully, uh, uh, support this program, uh, as little as it may be or as little subscribed, but I think it's, um, I think it's, it's an important step for us to participate in uh, with other states and agencies across the West. So that's, I'll move, make the motion for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, your, your time is worth a lot, Robert, so.
Thank you, appreciate the recognition.
We have significant sunk costs. All right, all.
That's what I was getting at.
I know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that passed five votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, on eight, on, I'm sorry, action item ten B, I have, uh, I'll be recusing on this item because of, uh, some adjacent real property interests, so.
Okay, Dan, when, when you're ready.
Okay, good morning, board. I'm here today to request authorization to initiate the design phase for this sec, second-ranked project that was identified in, in our twenty-eighteen East Coachella Valley Water Supply Project. Uh, this project is located along Airport Boulevard. And you can see it, it constructs a major transmission main along Airport Boulevard and some distribution pipeline to consolidate thirteen mobile home parks. Uh, we would also be working with the City of Coachella on this project because there are some common interests in terms of some of the developments that this project would, would provide benefit to. So today, I'm here to request authorization for the general manager to execute a, a professional services agreement with dock and engineering in the amount of nine hundred eighty-seven thousand thirty-nine dollars, as well as a task order to order in current in the amount of one hundred two thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars for a total project request of one million two hundred twenty thousand dollars. Um, I can go through in more detail what this project involves or?
Yeah, I, I just wanna, uh, also mention that, that I think, um, this particular project has, has received, uh, financial assistance from both, uh, the federal government and, uh, the state government. So, uh, just, just in, I think in the grants that we've secured for this project, it must be around over maybe three million dollars. So, uh, and then we plan to get, go get more, so.
Correct.
I think it's important for us to mention that.
Sure. And, right, so we've received a six hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, through our Irwin Group, through Department of Water Resources. We, we also have a two-point-seven million dollar federal appropriation. We're chasing another three-point-four million appropriation, as well as a SRF grant that we're hoping to get roughly ten to twelve million or more to fund the construction of this project. The total cost of this project is gonna be about twenty, twenty-one million dollars.
And then, um, I, I just, just for clarification, is the design, uh, for only the portions in red? Or, or is design include, uh, Phase Three-A, Two? Um, or, or how is this, uh, is the design inclusive of, of everything we see here?
Yeah, the design includes everything you see here, so along Airport Boulevard. And if you see the yellow line down along Fifty-seventh Avenue, there on the right to Pier Street, as well as a pipeline, uh, just west of Highway Eighty-six. So this would be for the entire design.
Okay.
The blue, the blue's already existing.
The blue is existing.
Yes.
Across the expressway, correct.
And, and some of these water mains and then the community and thermal right there.
Right, yes, I should clarify, everything in blue is existing.
Okay.
So, is the, uh, is the yellow existing?
No.
So, how, how do the blue, like at Leon and Duran's and Oscar, how do they get, uh, water if there's no pipeline now?
So, um, right now, all the, uh, light-colored mobile home parks are, are in well water. And so, we would, uh, design and ultimately construct pipelines in all of those roads.
Oh, okay, so you're saying the blue, the blue, uh, so those light-colored, I, I'm thinking they're blue, but they're, they're not being served right now?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay, got it.
So, just 'cause I'm curious, on Pier Street, where you see the blue line, okay?
Mm-hmm.
That's existing.
Correct.
You've, you've got, um, the yellow and the red where between Airport and Fifty-seven.
Correct.
The, the blue, if that's existing, wha, wha, what did that do? It just looks like it ends.
It, it ends, are you talking about the piece on Airport across the expressway?
No, on Pier Street, that goes north and south.
Okay, that just dead, dead ends. It just dead ends.
Oh, it just dead ends?
Right, there, there were future plans at that time to continue this loop.
Oh, okay.
So it's completing the loop?
Completing the loop.
This is completing the loop.
That's cool. Yeah, I used to live on Pier Street, just above, on like Fifty-three, so up, up that area. So this is, I, I look at this, I'm like, wow, this is, you know, going in the old homestead, so. Yeah, it's very cool.
There's no more, uh, questions there, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes. And I'll go, can we get, uh, President Powell, thank you.
Hey, David. All right, ten C, go ahead.
My on.
You're on.
Can you hear me okay? Uh, good morning, purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute task order number one to the professional services agreement with Aspen Environmental Group. Uh, the total cost of this request, which includes a ten percent requ, uh, contingency, is eighty-five thousand one hundred eighty-six, uh, dollars.
Just above.
We are wrapping up the environmental documents, we just, um, uh, closed out the public review and we are reviewing the comments as we speak. This, uh, cost here to Aspen is to help us finalize some lingering costs associated with, uh, the engagement with the regulatory folks, uh, and some additional items, uh, that were unexpected with respect to that engagement. And I can go into further detail if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That passed five votes. Finance.
Ooh, we're already here.
Yeah, we're already here. Is it still good morning or we?
The new budget.
Yes, we got a budget to prove. So, um, yes, so based upon, um, the action that was taken on item nine A, it narrows it down to, uh, looking at scenario three here, just for the public, public's benefit. We've already had two full study sessions on the budget and two board meetings, so this is now our fifth time looking at the budget. Uh, we don't have a PowerPoint on this one, but we do have the details presented. And I would direct, uh, people's attention to scenario number three, to be looking at the numbers. Uh, I believe we still have Carrie Swain on the line, our controller to answer any detailed questions. Uh, but before I forget, I just wanna thank everyone from the staff, all the departments. This is a huge lift, you're seeing the final product, but really, there's just hundreds of hours of work that went into getting to where we are today. And I thank the board also because you've been along with us for that ride. Uh, so with that, I'll ask if you have any questions for staff.
You know, I did have one, Jeff. Don't know if it indicates something is awry. I notice on all the funds we have, let me go to the fund one here. But, um, we have a reduction in investment income, but when you look at, um, sanitation, it doesn't. How is that possible? And I, and I'm thinking, well, Met, they must have much higher fund balances during the year, but when you look at beginning and ending balances, you don't see it.
Sure.
Like, overall, right, and I think this is allocated based on, you know, how, how much funds they have in, you know, in reserves, in reserves, I guess. But investment income budgeted last year of six-point-three million, this year is three-point-six million, right? So it's a little over half. And, and you look through the funds and they all look like they're losing about half compared to the prior year in that line item, but when you get to sanitation, that's not the case.
Maybe they're in something else?
Well, I mean, I was, I was originally running that down to try to figure out, looking for other revenues for, you know, our favorite little fund, the domestic fund. And, uh, and I'm thinking, well, how is, how in the world does sanitation get? So last year, you budgeted one-point-one million of investment income, and this year it's one-point-two-six-five. And when you go down to look at their, you know, reserves, beginning and ending, including the year before, there's nothing there that says it should be, you know what I mean? It's pretty flat.
Um, Director Powell, so that, that's based on, again, you corrected, it's based on the, on the cash balance, uh, within the fund. So, even though at the budgetary purposes, that's what it shows, uh, in terms of the estimated cash, that's what's estimated at the end of the year, but I guess it, it depends on how we spend it through, as we're expending it for capital expenditure. So, um, that was based on the estimated, um, cash balance upon utilizing the loans as well. Um, so we're not utilizing a lot of the, uh, our cash at that point because we have, uh, incoming loan, uh, from State Water Resource Board, uh, for the sanitation fund. There's two of them that's active right now. I, I hope that explains.
So what you're saying is, we're, we're going to have significant amount of cash in the sanitation fund during the year.
In, incoming from the loan, yes, 'cause we have two active State Water Resource Board loans right now.
But do we, so do, do we take those loan proceeds and invest them? It just doesn't make sense.
No, I don't, I don't think we're doing an advance draw on those funds, is that?
I don't know, it just seems, and it's a pretty big number, I mean, I, you know, it's, it's probably seven hundred thousand higher than what I would expect based on what I see in every other fund.
Yeah, I have the same reaction, frankly, looking at it. I would note that the, the action that the board is approving here is an appropriations budget approval. So the revenue information is being presented as very important information, but it's not part of what you're actually approving.
So the, so just, I did the math, so on one-point-two million of, of investment income on a sixty-three million dollar Indian reserve is one-point-eight percent.
Yeah, no, I, you know.
I, I, I get what you're saying.
I'd be willing, I'd be willing to approve the budget, but I'd like to get some, some more info on that later. You know, is it an error or is there something there that? Well, and, and does it tie to the general manager's report, which we saw on the consent calendar, shows six hundred and fifty million dollars in cash? I've never seen cash anywhere near that number, I think the prior month, it's typically, it's in the four hundreds.
Yeah.
Mid-four hundred thou, millions?
Yeah.
And now it's six hundred and fifty million, I mean, where did the two hundred million come from?
Well, the ca, the cash can re, refer to some influx of funds. The, it's different from the invested funds, which is where we're really actively investing funds.
Right, so funds, so cash shows up and.
Ca, cash can be very fluid from one month to another.
Yeah, no, I get it, I just, I've never seen it at six hundred and fifty million, I've never seen it over five hundred million. And so that's a hundred and fifty million that just showed up.
Part of that six hundred and fifty includes the restricted, where it's not sitting in our regular cash account. Uh, for example, um, the domestic, uh, note, uh, was also, uh, sitting in a different bank account that's, that's in the trustee, so that's part of the total cash. But a portion of that six hundred and fifty million is cash that we can't touch, um, for the loan, for the domestic note. And also a balance of that for the Oasis that was still, uh, going to be utilized, it's also. But it, it is considered in terms of gap and in terms of what we're reporting on the GM, we have to report it as a total cash, but a, a, a portion of that is restricted, uh, that we can't use for, um, investments for the COP.
So you, so I, I guess all I'm really asking is, is the six hundred and fifty million real? And, and so it's draws on loans that, it's just sitting in cash?
It, it includes that, so, uh, we had, uh, the domestic note, we had thirty-five million, uh, coming in for that. It, it includes that, so, uh, we had, uh, the domestic note, we had thirty-five million, uh, coming in for that. And also we had the initial, um, sixty million, uh, for the storm water. Um, so that's six fifty, so less to sixty for the storm water and less to thirty-five for the domestic note. And then I think there was another twenty-something million that was still left over for Oasis. That's all, um, set aside in the restricted fund for us that we can't.
Maybe property tax.
But it was still part of our cash and property tax revenues. And recently we did get, um, we did just get thirty-three million, um, this month from WIPIA. Uh, we finally drew on WIPIA, we were able to draw on it, so we, for the storm water, so we got thirty-three million on that as well.
All right. All right, well, let's put these funds to use, huh? So, um, getting back to the budget, if, if I go just to the first page on all fund summary, on, on the, I don't know if it's on that slide, but whatever. Uh, we show actuals for the prior years and then for fiscal twenty-two, which is ending in two days, we're just showing it through period nine. Do we have a sense of how fiscal twenty-two compares to budget yet? I mean, it's, it'll be over, it'll be done in two days, I know that's asking a lot to have that information.
You're correct, it's a lot to be asked.
It is, but, but do we, I mean, how, how, do we have a sense of how close to budget we're gonna be for fiscal twenty-two? Did we already, did you provide something like that already? I don't remember.
Yeah.
It might have been the year before, it was the year before.
The, the fiscal year twenty-two budget, that's the adjusted one based on the last mid-year that we did. So that is actually including the projection throughout the year already.
Okay.
That column, the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
So you do a mid-year adjustment in what, April or something?
We did, uh, April twel- twelfth, I believe.
Okay, so that, so where it says fiscal year twenty-two budget, that's actually a, a revised based on actuals through the first nine months.
It is, and, and, and this, these particular figures, we made a point not adjusting them from the last two weeks when we previously presented this item, um, to avoid having numbers shifting.
Yeah, I get it, all right.
But really, as, as you know, and for the public's benefit, we really end up closing our, our accounting records a couple of months from now. It takes that long for, you know.
Understandable.
Things to kind of shake out.
Right, okay. So you want us to, did you have any more, Jeff, or, or should we?
No, I appreciate.
I've seen it a million times.
Approval on this budget and we.
Can you just go over, because my biggest thing is the CIP.
Sure.
And so can you just go over where we, where we started the year last year? And wha- what is carryover and what is not? Because that, that is, that is a monster, that is a monster number, one hundred and eighty.
You can see a lot of that in the general manager's report.
And, and the board recently approved a continuation item relating to.
No, I know, we did, I know we did, I was on, I was in on that.
Carrie, would you like to speak to that?
From the general manager's report, it looks like we're, what, in the high seventies on execution, eighty, heading for eighty percent execution? You're getting a.
It, it is, it is an area that it remains fluid even with CIP because, um, what gets recorded in the final numbers is based upon work that was done, goods that were received, um, th- through June thirtieth. So as we're waiting for final billing from contractors, uh, and those can come in later and they represent the actual expense that gets booked even though it wasn't paid out.
So you can actually push it into this year?
Well, no, what I'm saying is if, if work was performed
Right.
uh, on or before June thirtieth, it will ultimately get recorded in the year that we're closing out.
Even though you might pay for it a few weeks later?
Exactly.
All right, I got you.
Same with revenues coming in.
That makes sense.
Yeah. But to the other point, and I think what, uh, Director Bianco is saying, we do push forward the unspent budget amounts.
Yes.
Because it's just a time indifference, that gets moved into the new fiscal year. So the capital.
For this, yeah, for this particular year, out of the hundred and eighty million, um, capital improvement projects, uh, majority of that is funded by grants and loans, uh, as well. So that your net PGO out of the hundred and eighty is about sixty-six million for this fiscal year twenty, twenty-three.
You said a hundred and sixty-six million, Carrie?
No, so sixty-six million, so out of a hundred and eighty, a hundred and fourteen million is funded by grants and loans and restricted funds, and the rest of them is, um, sixty-six million is going to be funded through PGO. And you can see that, uh, I think it's one of the attachments that was provided on this item, on that five-year, um, CIP list that's attached. So if you look through that attachment, uh, you can kind of see the breakdown, uh, of, of the distribution of that, um, funding. I don't know if you can pull it up on the slide, but it is attached, uh, to the agenda.
It's the, it's the one-page summary, I believe it's the last attachment. It's page one thousand sixty-four of the packet.
That's why I didn't get any sleep last night.
So it's a hundred and eighty total. So out of the hundred and eighty, uh, you can see that, um, about eighty-one point five million is for storm water. Some, a big chunk of that is for storm water. Um, and again, um, for domestic, out of the thirty-four, um, only, um, six million is funded uh, by PGO and the rest is being funded by grants and loans as well.
Also, if you look at the staff report, B I, on, um, the third page of that report, packet, page number one thousand four, it becomes a discussion on the breakdown of the funding that you were referring to for the CIP.
Yep. Okay, and as a reminder, all of this, although it tends to be a lot of it continuations of things that are already approved, but as these projects, there aren't that many new projects in the budget, really, are there?
There are not that many new ones.
But those, those will come before the board for approval?
Yes.
At future meetings. All right, good, is there a motion to?
I'll make, uh, the motion to approve the, um, twenty twenty-three operating unit capital improvement budget.
And, uh, may I ask that include a reference to the third scenario?
Right.
Yeah. Which incorporates the scenario three.
I'll second that motion.
Good. Uh, all right, is there any other discussion before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? He didn't even pay attention.
I do.
Five oh, right?
Yep.
Okay, it was approved five oh. Good, all right, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
So we don't need to do, so, so we're not, we're not gonna take up item E because it's only necessitated if D did not pass.
Render a mute because of the action taken on D.
Mute or moot?
It's a moot point.
Mute, let's mute that mute.
Just the lawyer will be mute, right?
We have a button for that. All right. Uh, written communications, that's eleven A. There was one, uh, from Mr. Jaworski and that was resolved, okay. And then, are we gonna do this? I guess it's early enough, we could, huh? Luis? I was thinking we might just, we might just skip right over this, but.
This is just priming the pump, this is all.
Yeah, ju- tell, tell us how much more money you need before you have your.
I heard the goal of helping with spending funds, so I'm here to, uh, provide that service.
All right, go ahead, Luis.
Yes, good morning, President Powell, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, present an update on the SCADA master plan. As you know, it's, uh, it's a six-year, uh, uh, program and we're in the fifth year. Uh, we're very pleased to report that we have one more year to go. Although, sequential, uh, work will be required for what we call the, uh, last mile, uh, primarily outdated RTUs. Then the core of the SCADA replacement will be done. Uh, and so we want to sort of, uh, give you an update and project what's coming. We have, uh, additional BA items, um, on this twenty twenty-three fiscal year that will require obviously your approval. And again, uh, we wanna give you, uh, an overall update on what we have spent, uh, the state of the program. And with that, uh, today, uh, Jim Kennedy, Principal with CGR, is here to give us that update. They've done a great job and, um, uh, again, we believe very, uh, seriously that we have to provide you transparency so that you have insight as to how we're doing and you'll know that there's a, a light.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
Can we, we're gonna have a time crunch, so.
Well, uh, this is, we're just gonna give you two or three slides.
Clock says eleven twenty, we're gonna have to move on.
Okay, we'll be done, okay, here you go, you got five minutes, Jim.
To luck.
Okay, thank you, good morning, President Powell, members of the board, uh, General Manager Barrett. Um, it's a pleasure to be with you again, I'll start off by thanking you for approving our task order of the last meeting for this next, uh, year of activity on the program. Um, it looks like a lengthy agenda, but I will rip through the, uh, the status of the program and move on to, uh, just a couple of items, uh, that will be upcoming.
Can I, can I just go to questions directly?
Um, and then, and then you can finish your presentation. Surely.
John only has four minutes left. So, um, uh, the one question I have is, and I didn't see it in the staff report, is there some way to quantify what the overall operating savings has been for the organization as a result of implementing this six-year program?
So I think it is possible to, uh, quantify a small amount of direct cost savings. Many of the savings will be intangible, they talk to things like flexibility advantage, um, other, other forms of advantage that you get from having modern, uh, equipment. The primary one being, uh, the contingency of failure, that is to say, the existing system or the legacy system was unsupportable and was on a technology that, uh, was, was experiencing a high rate of failure already. Uh, and that was not an acceptable condition, uh, for your major infrastructures.
Okay, good, I understand, thank you.
Okay.
Trust me, but we, I mean, we ripped them good for a while.
It was.
Did you?
It was a system.
Before they asked for all this money, this was a big thing.
It was a system that was built in the seventies, you had, uh, you know, the best part of four-plus decades, uh, out of the old system, I hope you get the save out of this one. Obviously, the goal of the program was to refresh completely, um, the, uh, SCADA system capabilities uh, within a six-year period, and we are in now the sixth year. Uh, we use a hopefully simple framework for management and control of the program, it is a twenty-million-dollar program. And so, uh, I think it is important to, uh, maintain, uh, control. We, uh, have divided the work into eight phases, uh, across eleven initiatives. And as you can see, we are now in the sixth phase, uh, of the program, which is primarily pointed towards the three warps, uh, warp four, seven, and ten. Uh, if you look at the program's schedule, that also reflects the fact that we are in the final year of the program with about twelve months, uh, to run. It also illustrates that we have actually, uh, seen some slippage, but within the contingency of schedule that we had assigned to the program. We like to, um, put an aggressive, uh, target, but also allow enough contingency, um, to take up the slack as, as needed. We've had many, uh, great accomplishments technically and from a business perspective, uh, on this program. Uh, not least of which is to complete the first five phases, which included the migration of the Coachella Canal, the domestic water system, the sanitation and irrigation infrastructure, as well as building new radio towers, implementing a new microwave network over a thousand square mile area, building two control rooms and a new data center. Uh, we've also completed the cut over of warp four, uh, to the new SCADA system and implemented many new policies, procedures, frameworks, best practices, which has resulted in three industry awards being received by the, uh, IT department. In terms of costs, we've spent, uh, as of, uh, the end of March, and, and of course, costs lag during the year fairly considerably. We'd spent fifteen point three million dollars on the program. We, uh, obviously had an authorization initially of twenty million dollars. If you look on the next slides, uh, you can see that we intend to spend currently about eighteen point five million. So we have, uh, a little ways to go. Uh, program managers love their S-curves and so we, uh, would like to show you one here. Uh, this one looks pretty favorable, as you can see, the blue line is the planned value. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, green line is the earned value and the red line is the actual value. And the fact that the red line is below both the green line and the blue line is a very good thing. Uh, and speaks, uh, well to, uh, the way staff has performed in delivering this program. Uh, and, uh, I, I think, uh, you, it's a program that you can be justifiably proud of. Uh, this graph pretty much says it all. Uh, in this graph, in this chart, we show, uh, a number of cas- cost categories. I think the only important thing about this is to say that of the remaining three point one million that we estimate will be spent, only thirty-four percent of it at this point is uncommitted and we will be coming back next month, uh, to request some substantial portion of that remaining million dollars. Uh, we anticipate that, uh, we will leave the program with about one and a half million dollars of the total authorization unspent, which will go some way towards the activity that will still be needed in the future to do upgrades to your field automation, um, which is going to be subsequent to this program. We still have work in phase six, seven, and eight to be completed. Uh, I'm not gonna go through the details of this, but the major parts of the final two warps and, uh, about fifteen other sites, uh, that need to be upgraded that we will, we will, um, come back next month to discuss with you. The warp implementations are going well, um, but we are looking to increase the budget. Uh, we had about two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, uh, allocated towards this, uh, activity. And it was originally intended that we would have a like-for-like replacement of the existing system with the new system. However, it turns out that that's probably not a great assumption and that we would actually rather do something a little bit more, um, involved uh, in order to make for a much better system that will serve us well into the future. So we are looking to increase the budget, um, probably by as much as a hundred percent, which sounds like a lot, um, but in absolute terms is relatively modest because we'd only put a quarter of a million dollars into the, the control system for three warps. Um, and now that we're having some redesign activity and we're increasing the number of screens and we're moving from just simple columnless screens to process-based screens, which give us better situation awareness of what's going on, um, I think it's entirely warranted and will allow for the future replacement of the existing distributed control systems within the plants for replacement using the supervisory control system that we're implementing. So it will actually provide you with a, a much more effective platform for holistic control of all of your, um, operational technology. So we will be coming back next month and probably asking for authorization to extend the contract by a few hundred thousand dollars for the warp implementations. Similar largely, we will be, uh, coming back to talk about some, uh, legacy field device replacement. As you know, there are three hundred and fifty-ish aging micro RTU devices in the field, these are nineteen eighties-era, uh, automation devices. They do desperately need replacing, it was never the intention within the SCADA master plan that we would go to all of the sites and replace all of these devices, primarily because of the civil work that would also be involved in implementing new cabinets and, and, and various things. However, in phase seven, we had intended to undertake various expansion of the automation. It turns out that, looking at possible opportunities for expansion of the automation, some of the replacements are actually going to be a higher priority, and so we would like to undertake nine, uh, site replacements at potable sites and six at lift stations on the sanitation system. And we'll be coming back to you next month for those fifteen sites. And we'll be coming back to you next month for those fifteen sites. And so, last slide, in, in recognition of President Powell's desire to move on. These are the two items I'll be coming back for, additional work, work, work on the warps, the fifteen sites. We'll probably bring those back as a single item. I don't think they're controversial. So it would be, it's only gonna be one contract amendment, so we'll just make it one board item. And in the long term, I would encourage you to approve the replacement of all of the field automation, which is hundreds of sites and will be millions of dollars. But hopefully, the small contribution we can make from this program will speed that on its way. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
Just thank, thank you guys so much. I think this is a big project, and it's nearing the end. I look forward to March of twenty twenty-three. We'll have some kind of luncheon or something.
All right, thank you.
Good, thank you, thank you very much, Jim. So the reason for the expediency is that Vice President Estrada asked to leave it mewed.
I actually have a hard stop at eleven fifty, because I gotta be somewhere at noon.
So I gotta, we gotta get on to the Oasis item before that. So I'd say eleven thirty-five. So we have ten minutes to get through everything else. And Board Member, Board Member General Comments? Anybody?
Okay, just interesting, the IID board had some elections over the summer, and so Alex Cardenas retained his seat on the board. Karen Ijuno Ingenio, former mayor of one of the towns down there, as will replace Norma Galinda in, at the end of the year, beginning of next year. And then there'll be a runoff for Mr. Hank's seat coming up between Gina Young Docstetter and Don Campbell. So I thought, just interesting bit of news down there. And I'll cover a lot of my other comments in my meeting reports to move things along.
All right.
No comments.
Okay, me either. Future agenda items? Not aware of any. So let's get into the board meetings. Reports, May thirty-one, California Agency Caucus, Director Nelson.
Yeah, so that, we met, the Colorado River Board members met on the thirty-first, that day, to talk about the scope of the posted twenty-six next set of guidelines. And so that was a meeting between the California Caucus.
Okay, and then CRB?
Yeah, so I did not attend the CRB or the six-agency meeting on the fifteenth.
And I also did not attend, I was planning to attend, I had a prior commitment, but I did make sure to call Mr. Christopher, what's his last name?
Harris.
Harris, in the morning to just make sure that they had quorum. So it looked like I was able to kinda do what I needed to take care of, and so I was also not there.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess I took care of the CRA meeting also, huh?
Correct.
Not attended. Let's see, June twentieth DVBA meeting, I was present for that, going over a number of housing-related issues. Interesting, the, there's five or six different low-income or housing projects in the California that are costing over a million dollars per unit to construct.
Wow.
Per, per unit?
Per, that's incredible.
I know, it's, that's why we have a housing problem. Okay. Let's see, June twenty-first, Tower, tour of Water Rec, ten, Mike Garcia and Luis Tonner, and Don Wilcox gave me a very good tour. I saw a lot of things that are coming up as far as needing to be replaced, particularly the headworks at Work Ten. They did a really good job. Let's see, we had a little meeting with Peter and, and Robert and I on the Colorado River Conservation Program that we just approved. Just working through details of that. Good.
Good report.
June twenty-third, Salt and Sea Authority, Director Bianco.
A little bit of a budget. Also, also had a big presentation on the Colorado River and the possible cutbacks.
Yep. We had the membership appreciation night at the Air Museum for DVBA on the twenty-third. I was there. Victoria was there. I don't know if anyone else was there. If you were, I missed you. Anyways, it was more just to thank you and, and getting sworn in as, as board members. We had the national, it's kind of a big deal that they're now members of the National, NAHB Housing, whatever. It's the National Housing Group. You, I know you.
I don't know.
NAHB. Anyways.
It's a big deal.
I, I know it too. The guy, whatever. June twenty-seventh, NAHB, National Association of Home Builders.
Oh, nice, nice.
June twenty-seventh, California Water Farm Water Coalition.
Yeah, that was in Sacramento. I participated via Zoom. We're still getting a lot of good feedback, and, and a lot of information is getting passed through as a result of the Wall Street Journal ad and, and the Lester Holt interview, and that's being played through social media and getting a lot of, then impressions, and I don't know what you call them, engagements in the public with the Farm Water Coalition website. So it's, it's going pretty good.
Good. Other meetings, I had one on June fifteenth. Jim and I met with the Twenty-Nine Palms and some representatives of City of La Kina to discuss some of their issues.
I, I had one on June twenty-second. We had a finance committee for the Salt and Sea, Salt and Sea Authority. I'm the treasurer of that, and... Salt and Sea Authority has been running a negative for the last couple of years, and that's part of what our increased dues are. And so Patrick has a plan to, to keep that at, at zero for the coming, for the foreseeable future.
Good. Any others?
Yeah, I have a few. I'll get through them really quick. So on June fifth and sixth, I participated in Seven Basin States Coordinating Committee in Salt Lake City, speaking about the upcoming testimony from Commissioner Tooten and John Eensminger in DC on the fourteenth. So it was to get our input as well as to get kind of a preview of what they were seeing. We also talked about the reductions of the, up to two million acre feet and how the Seven Basin States might deal with that. So that was on the fifth and sixth. On the sixth through the, I'm sorry, on the ninth and tenth, participated in San Diego. Mr. Barrett was there for that one. California, Arizona, and Nevada. Started with discussions about how to rebalance in the lower basin. A little bit contentious, as you might have heard in the paper, but at the same time, a lot of good discussion about how to deal with some upcoming conservation needs in the lower basin. Ninth and tenth. So on the sixteenth and seventeenth, there was another Basin States meeting in Denver with the Seven Basin States Coordinating Committee and some additional people. And really, we, we reviewed kind of the, the implications of the testimony that had happened three days earlier, continuing to try and devise a process by which to address the bureaus now really called to protect lake levels at Lake Powell at thirty-five twenty-five and Lake Mead at ten twenty. Then, on six twenty-four, we had a river operations meeting with BOR and the seven states. That was a Zoom meeting. And then on the twenty-seventh, it was, oh, that was yesterday, right? Yeah. That was a check-in with BOR. There's a number of meetings later this week with the State of California, CNRA.
Thursday.
Thursday, and then those folks are going down to Imperial County on Friday to talk about potential actions California might take regarding conservation methods. So the state is on board with meeting with the bureau and trying to address many issues which will affect Coachella, Imperial, Salt and Sea Metropolitan, PVID in California.
Did you get all that? Anybody else?
Good job, Sylvia.
Anybody else? No? Could I have a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passed five oh. General Manager report?
Yes, sir, just quickly, the only thing I'll cover is the, the virus. Two hundred ninety-five recovered qualifying cases, roughly about fifty-three, fifty-four percent of our staff. We've got ten folks off right now because of COVID-related situations, and twenty-three qualifying cases so far to date in the month of June.
No monkeypox, huh?
Not yet. Thank you, sir.
Council, Council report?
I will pass in the interest of time.
Any departmental reports? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, so we're gonna go into the Oasis Board, which means we can excuse Directors Aguilar and Nelson. Yeah, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one.
No, no, no.
Bianca and Nelson. Bianca and Nelson, sorry.
So, for the record, this is the recusal and the requalification of Director Powell on Oasis matters. A recusal and requalification that was completed a number of years ago.
Thank you. Sorry, John, you have to stay. I was thinking over there. Okay.
It's a task order that's attached to this item. It wasn't included.
All right. All right, David. I think you're good to go. Core's yours.
All right, thank you. The purpose of this item is to authorize the General Manager to execute a check request to the Imperial Irrigation District in the amount of two million five hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents. And change order number eight to Sukka Construction LLC in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred thirteen dollars. The total cost of this request, which, which includes an additional contingency, a ten percent contingency, is three million fifty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine thousand eighty dollars. The, the request itself, the effective impact here is a reallocation of pre-approved expenditures. I tried to spell that out in the board item. I'm happy to go into that with, with detail. But the, the ultimate request is an, an exceedance of the original approved budget by the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars. And I'll take any questions.
So this IID amount, was that in the original budget?
That was not in the original budget. You may recall, we were tasked to bring this to board to award roughly six months in advance of what we had planned. We were still working with IID.
Okay, so we didn't know the amount.
We, we had a sense for the amount, but we were still working it out with them.
Does that seem reasonable, the two point five?
Yes.
Million?
If you like, I can go into what they're doing, if that...
Yeah, if, just very briefly, I'd just like to get a sense of what that, what we got for that or why we needed to take care of that. It sounds like you said that we had some, we knew that we were gonna do some of this. And to, to President Powell's question, were we close to the two point five, or were we...
We thought it was gonna be around two point five. I mean, frankly, the prudent thing would have been to have it on that original ask. However, the good news is, we're still within the original approved budget, as is outlined in this. And I don't know if you can see my, I don't think you can see my mouse here. Is there, is there a way to project it onto here? I can point. That might help.
Can you please put up the map behind, David?
Okay. So this is the, the original plan with this project was to bring power, was to work with, I think it was Travertine Point, the original developer down in this area, who was gonna install a substation for IID. And we were gonna work in concert with them and our original Highway eighty-six project. Both, all three projects needed, needed power. We were gonna work that out. The development fell through. Our Highway eighty-six was able to work out power a different way. So they, they were short of power at this Oasis pump station here. So what we have worked out with them, thanks to our resident engineer here, is to improve their circuit so that they can have the capacity. And so they're gonna run power, new line, to the Highway eighty-six junction here, which will split the existing line that comes down this way, which introduces a new circuit, and then run a line straight across to this pump station, down to this pump station, all the way to Ambusha Station and this pump station here. So it's a series of power poles and new line extensions.
To power our...
To power the Oasis project, yes.
Okay. And, and then, as it relates to all the budget calculations and the financials that, that we entered into, all those numbers, and was that two point five embedded into, into that? So we're, we're good as...
Yeah, we are, we are over the original approved budget by one hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Okay, so, okay, so that's not, that's not, it's not a big, we're not asking for a lot, right?
Yeah, we're, we're roughly point three percent over the original.
Yeah, okay.
And to follow any remaining contingencies?
Well, we're asking, and the reason we're even over right now is because we are asking for an additional contingency, just to leave us, just so we're not without one, because we are on the back third, if you will, for the project.
And what was the additional contingency?
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay. And, 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 and we're at, what, we're at like ninety-eight percent of the project, ninety-five percent of the project?
I believe it's ninety, you're talking about completion?
Yeah, so I, I'm just trying to figure out how much more time we have to, to potentially eat up that additional contin... I'm, I'm just wondering if it's, we're pretty much at the, at the end of the project.
Yeah, we're on the back, we're on the back third of things, yes.
Okay. And any, any other reason why you would need more than that, than the two hundred thousand that you're asking for? Unknown, unknown?
I mean, the project is not actually scheduled for completion until about a year from now, right?
But a bulk, yeah.
Deliveries will start.
A bulk of that is related to the power and the MCC.
February. I thought I heard February.
And then I thought I heard end of calendar year.
February, June.
Well, originally, yeah, originally it was end of calendar year, and then we've had some problems with material deliveries, so it has extended. And just in an abundance of caution, I've been telling people second quarter of calendar year twenty twenty-three. So whether that's April first or June thirtieth, that's second quarter.
Okay.
It's a small piece of this request, but what is a weep hole?
A weep hole is just, it's a hole in, in concrete to allow for it to drain.
Moisture, yeah.
Yeah, for moisture.
Yes.
It, it's a small amount here. It's, we have these spillways. Yeah. If you were to go out to any of our stormwater channels, you'd see them.
Yeah, that's true.
Windows have weep holes.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
All right. That's a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed three oh.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks, David.
David, thanks very much.
So this brings us to the end of the, today's agenda. With no further business and heretofore objection, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
We still have eight minutes. We can go back.